Tuesday, June the 14th. Please stand for our invocation by Pastor Andrew Daughtry Pathway Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray together. Lord, we first must give you thanks for allowing us to live in freedom, especially when there's so many of your children that live in oppression by the very ones who are given responsibility to serve them. I thank you for our leaders who have been elected and appointed not just to lead us, but to serve us. Thank you that you have entrusted a small part of your world, a wonderful city to live in. I, Lord, personally, thank you for having the privilege of living in Mobile for the last 36 years. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, see how truly smiled upon me and our city. We're blessed. Bless our agenda to be fruitful and for the common good to grant that our mayor and the council have ears to listen to the people. They serve in wisdom to act for justice. Let them not only lead well, but serve well. Let all of our citizens follow well with respect for those who have been placed over us in our community. Lord, you're well aware that there are many pressing challenges that face our city. There's violence, enmity between our fellow brothers and sisters, crime, drug abuse, hatred. These things will always be present because as the Bible says, there's an adversary seeking whom he may devour, seeking to destroy our beautiful city and its people. We pray for a revival of the heart. We pray for a revival of kindness. We pray for a revival of the family. Lord, you're also aware that there are many wonderful people in our city. We are thankful for our teachers, our healthcare workers, public safety workers, men and women who serve our country in our armed forces, and the many people who risk their lives every day for our protection. We thank you for them and the way they put their hearts into serving our city. We pray your continued blessing and protection on each of them. We pray for wisdom to make decisions that bring us closer together and not further apart. In our disagreements, let there be mercy and grace. In our agreements, let there be pride and thankfulness. But in all of our decisions, let there be integrity, openness, and honesty. Let your Spirit rest upon us today in everything that we do. Now, the Lord bless Mobile and keep us. The Lord make his face to shine upon Mobile and be gracious to us. The Lord lift up his countenance upon our city and give Mobile, Alabama, peace. Amen.
Roll call. President Small, Vice President Gregory, Councilmember Penn, Councilmember Carroll, Councilmember Reynolds, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Jones. Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see you all here. To steal a favorite phrase from one of our former colleagues, it's a great day in the city of Mobile. So with that, our president is out of town today, so I'm filling in, and we just welcome you all here today. The statement of rules, our rules are very simple. We just ask everyone to please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. Any person who wishes to address the council, you have to have registered upon entering the meeting outside. When addressing the council, we ask everyone to please come down and state your name and address for our record. Everybody is allowed for three minutes. Who addresses the council, a bell will sound to indicate two minutes is up, and one minute more is allowed for summarizing. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements or questions are to be made to the chair, and the chair then will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, as most of you know, must contact the clerk's office no later than 2:00 on Thursday prior to the city council meeting, and the subject that you wish to address has to be identified. Those people desiring to speak on agenda items must also indicate what that resolution or ordinance is, as well as a public hearing on any appeals when signing in at the door. If there are any questions, Ms. Lambert will be more than happy to take care of those issues for us. With that, I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. Good to see all of the visitors here today. We appreciate you being here. One of the things I'd like to point out this morning is to remind you of the Community Days that are being sponsored by the Mobile Police Department, and the purpose is really to combat our youth violence. Had a fantastic turnout at Baumhauer Randall Park with nearly 200 people coming. That was last week. They participated in games, had food, fun activities, and connected with various resources that we have in the community to help those that need help. These kind of outreach events are being led by Josh Jones, who is our Youth Violence Coordinator, and it's a critical part of what we refer to as Operation Echo Stop. You know, in addition to that, one of the things that you will pay attention and be able to pick up on during the course of the summer, the summer camps that we're having, one of the good things about the summer camps that are being sponsored by Mobile Parks and Recreation Department is it gives our employees, especially those that may also be focusing on youth violence, an opportunity to meet with younger people, you know, at a young age to try to make sure that they start off on the right path. So tremendously grateful for what Parks and Rec are doing in that area and plus what Mobile Police Department is doing in that area. This past week, or matter of fact, it wasn't this past week, it was yesterday afternoon, late, I got home from the most recent meeting of the Alabama's Big Ten Mayors. Those are the mayors from the 10 largest cities. We met in Hoover, which we do so quarterly. It's always inspirational to go listen to what is going on in other cities. For instance, US News and World Report, I don't know, USA Today reported that Huntsville is the best place in America to live. It's the number one city to live in in America. And Auburn, you know, the growth of Auburn is the fastest growing city in the state. There's six new residents moving into Auburn, Alabama every day is what the projection is. We told them of the things that were going on in Mobile. Another thing that was going on in Hoover, which is a relatively new city compared to what happens in Mobile, but they will be developing 2,500 lots for new residents to move into the city of Hoover. So when you look at the challenges that we have with an older city, established neighborhoods, don't have the vacant land for lots, but others are finding pathways to growing their communities, and we will continue on our quest to increase the population of the city of Mobile, but it's going to take all of us working together to do things differently in order to make sure that we can do that. Anyway, all in all, a great meeting, and we will meet again in October. This time it will be in Auburn. At this time, I would like to make a present, I have several certificates of recognition and appreciation. The first one has to do with the Distinguished Young Women, and I would ask Destiny Cluck and Kendra Haskins to come forward, as well as Kathy Latta. Kathy, you can come down and join them if you would like, okay? So really, the city council needs no introduction to what all the Distinguished Young Women has meant to our community for so long. This recognition today has to do with 65 years of being here, and so that's amazing. Other than the Senior Bowl, I think it's probably the longest surviving organization that really positively impacts not just our city, but those who visit our city. So we're tremendously grateful for the leadership of the Distinguished Young Women and for all that they do. So over the next few days, ladies from all across the United States and their families will be here participating in all things Mobile. Then I think it's next Thursday the competition actually starts, and then Saturday will be the finals, and we'll find out who our new reigning Distinguished Young Woman would be. Is that be correct? So Destiny, would you like to make just a few remarks?
Hello, Council of Mobile. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate the experiences I've had. I am from Kennesaw, Georgia, so a very small town in Georgia, never heard of Mobile, but the Distinguished Young Women program has brought me and so many other girls so many great opportunities. I'm able to go to college all the way in Massachusetts. Very expensive, but thank goodness with Distinguished Young Women, they provide so many opportunities, including scholarships, leadership, and also a community that is so strong like Mobile that I really appreciate supporting so many girls around the U.S. It's really impacted me, and I just want to say thanks.
So I cannot thank the city council and all the people of Mobile enough. We would not have been able to be here and make the impact that we do for 65 years without your support. It's the almost 1 million young women nationally who have gone through this program, whose lives have changed, who have become leaders in their communities, who are making an even more positive impact, but also those young women who've now traveled to Mobile and because of our collegiate relationships in the state of Alabama have actually stayed behind and become incredibly impactful leaders here in the state of Alabama. So the reach is so much more than just these two weeks, and you all and your support and Mobile's support is truly making that possible. I will also mention that this year alone, from this program that was the vision of a group of Mobileans in 1958, we've made available over $1 billion in college scholarships to girls across the country. And the program, because of your support, has remained free to make sure that any young woman, no matter her circumstances, is able to participate. So thank you again for not only supporting the program here in Mobile, but for making it possible for us to have that national impact for over six decades. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so the proclamation or the certificate of recognition is very simple. It reads, "Distinguished Young Women of America is hereby officially thanked and recognized for 65 years of important contributions to the success and achievement of young women nationwide and to the city of Mobile. Done this 14th day of June in the year of our Lord 2022, and in the 320th year of the founding of the city of Mobile, proclaimed by William S. Thompson, the mayor of the city." Thank you so much. So my next remarks have to do with, well, thanking, but also introducing to you Captain Ladon Adams, excuse me, Allen. Captain Allen is the outgoing Sector Commander for the city of Mobile and the Coast Guard. I'll remind you, and for those in the audience that may not know it, Mobile is a Coast Guard city. We not only have the Sector Command here, but we also have the Strike Force, and there are only three of those in the United States, but we also have ATC, so every Coast Guard pilot comes through the city of Mobile at least once a year. So for Captain Allen, who has served 28 years in the Coast Guard, now not only is she outgoing as the Sector Commander, but she's actually retiring. And in my brief conversation with her earlier, she has a rising senior that they live in Daphne, and so she will be able to dedicate her life to making sure that she does things that mothers need to do with rising seniors to make sure they are pointed in the right direction for their interest into college. So Captain Allen, if you could please join me for a moment? And after I present the certificate, I'll make another introduction.
First, I just want to thank the council here and the mayor. You have definitely all supported the Coast Guard. As you know, we have a heavy footprint in Mobile. All of our children, our families, they support Mobile. They go to school here, and they live here, and we couldn't ask for more support from the city of Mobile to help us, our families, and just everything you do for us. I also like to ask for you to give that same support to Ulysses Mullins, who will be replacing me, and I know this has been my favorite assignment in my 28 and 1/2 years here, and I am definitely very happy to be living here after retirement. So thank you.
So I'd like to introduce to you Captain Ulysses Mullins, who's been with the Coast Guard for 26 years, and he's assuming the responsibility of Sector Commander. And this is a historic day in the Coast Guard history in the city of Mobile. We have the outgoing first female Sector Commander that has ever served in Mobile, and also the first African-American coming in as Sector Commander. So really shows the diversity that we have in our Coast Guard, but it's not just about diversity. I'm sure it has to do a lot with their leadership skills. And so in asking Captain Mullins, where was his favorite duty station? Now, he's from New York City, so keep that in mind. And he said, you know, truthfully, it was Hawaii, which I think that we can all understand that. And I told him that I would probably think Hawaii would be my most favorite duty station had I had that opportunity. But I told him that three years from now, whenever he chooses to retire, that we're hoping that he's going to say it's been Mobile, Alabama. Would you all agree with that?
Yes, sir.
So let's give a big round of applause to Captain Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good morning to you all. It is truly a pleasure to be here in Mobile. They did not have to drag me out of Hawaii. I came willingly. Mobile was one of my top choices in my assignment, what I requested in my assignments. So I'm really happy to be here. My wife Ashana and I have been on, not on island, excuse me, have been here for about two weeks now, and it is a very warm city. We've been greeted with nothing but kindness from folks we've interacted with, and I'm looking forward to leading the team at Sector Mobile and just getting to know what concerns are here in the port and just living, working, and exploring the community here in Mobile. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So for those of you that may not know it, Captain Snowden, retired Captain Snowden, was also Sector Commander here in Mobile. We're grateful he's working for the city of Mobile now.
Well, welcome, and farewell, but she says she's staying in the area, so we're glad to have you staying in our area. And then Captain, welcome to Mobile. We look forward to seeing you more here within the city and look forward to great things out at the Coast Guard Sector. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Fair winds and following seas to you both.
So at this time, we have some Public Works Employees that will be recognized as Employees of the Month, and that'll be handled by Shonda and Jim DeLa.
Okay, first, we're going to do our Public Works at Large Employee of the Month, Gregory Moscow, who's here, so Greg, if you can come down. The one thing I want to say is, and we're going to let Shayla talk a little bit about Greg, but the one thing I do want to say is tomorrow's also his birthday. So it's a double, double for him.
This morning, I'm honored to present the Public Works at Large Employee of the Month to Greg. Greg joined Bill Mobile in the Inspection Services Division in October of 2018 as a mechanical inspector. After retiring from 30 years of service in the U.S. Coast Guard, he was later promoted to Mechanical Inspector II in December of 2021. As you all know, this award is based on feedback and input from a committee of Public Works employees. I'd like to briefly highlight a few of the things that compel this committee to nominate Greg for this recognition. Greg is a team player. If his area is ever shorthanded, he is always willing to take on both residential and commercial inspections in addition to his regular duties. He always maintains a professional and positive attitude with fellow employees as well as contractors and property owners that we serve. Greg is very detail-oriented and always willing to share his individual knowledge and expertise to help train or assist his fellow employees, and Greg regularly goes above and beyond to help others. He was recently honored by the mayor for stopping to change a flat tire for a lady who had been stranded on the interstate. And just an excerpt from the mayor's newsletter that captures Greg, I think, in the best way. Greg Moscow works in the Mechanical Division of Bill Mobile, but on the morning of October 27th, he was simply a good Samaritan, helping a stranger in need on the side of the road. Greg helped change this woman's tire, and according to her, he did so with kind words and a smile. Greg, thank you for your dedication to the city and for embodying the values of the Bill Mobile Department. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to have Jermaine Smith come down from our Public Services Department, and we've got Dexter Johnston, who's our, his supervisor, who's going to talk a little bit about Jermaine.
Good morning. Jermaine Smith started his career with the city of Mobile in the Parks Department as an unskilled laborer. He's now a EO2 in the Public Works Division. He's one of those guys you see that maintain the ditches along the roads. Operates that machine that mows those ditches. He's very helpful. He's very caring. He helps his coworkers, and it's a pleasure to supervise Jermaine Smith.
And finally, we're going to have our Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month, Ms. Lena Kelso, who's our Employee of the Month for the month of June. Gerard, you're going to come down first.
Good morning. Ms. Lena Kelso is our... She is the person who keeps us together. She is our rentals coordinator. So if you ever needed a park, a building, an access to anything, she is the person who does it. What really makes a difference is when I run into people saying, who's that lady who's running the rentals? She is phenomenal. She's always nice, and she's dealing with my craziness. And she's from the phone to the email to the people that's coming in. She handles that, and it has blown up. If you can imagine what it's been like since COVID has shut down, everyone is coming and renting everything, and she does it with a smile. She also leads our events meeting on Wednesday that's keeping everyone in order and all of our events in order, who should be there, making sure grass is cut and the trash is picked up on time. So like I said, she helps keeps us in order, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
I will just say thank you all. I really appreciate this, and I appreciate the opportunity to work for the city of Mobile and serve the citizens, and I really am very thankful for all the people that I work with at Parks and Recreation Department. Such hardworking people and people of integrity and honorable people, and I just thank you and appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, and congratulations.
That's it.
All right. Ms. Lambert?
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on July 16th in Cathedral Square, August 2nd on Dolphin Street at Conception Street, and June 25th in Public Safety Memorial Park.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to modern transport to operate a taxi cab service.
This is a public hearing. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this public hearing, you're invited to come to the podium. Okay, with that, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Andre Dennis to operate a shuttle service.
This is also a public hearing, so if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this particular item, please come to the podium. That public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Rodney Tumer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rodney Tumer, 1202 Navaco Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36605. First, I'd like to say that as city council people, I think that you're always being told you're never doing enough, but that's a very hot seat you live, you work in, even from the mayor all the way around, this is a hot seat. And for us that's in the community, it's a song that I listen to every morning, and the name of it is called "Yes," and it says that there's more required of us. Will you say yes? Will your spirit say yes? Will your heart say yes? There's more required. And I listen to that every morning because I have to tell myself as a counselor, as an activist, as everything that I do, that it's always more that we need to do. Right now, I work in Taylor Park, the 36605 zip code. That's one of the most violent zip codes it is. I went in that zip code intentionally. I live in that zip code intentionally because I have to be there amongst the people that I look like and I'm supposed to be serving. I came up here because I wanted to tell you that the solution to some of the gun violence, to teen violence, I can tell you as a young man for myself. There are young men out there, a whole army of young black men that are angry. They're hopeless, and they're angry because they have teen mothers that are young, and these mothers that are young, they are frustrated and they're tired because there's no man there to guide their children. A lot of the black men are not in that family. And the first thing that these mothers say when they bring their children to me is that I'm tired. I'm tired. And because they have the young man that's the teenagers to raise, and then they have small children, and when they become to that, they disengage from the young man, and they leave the young man because they're focused on the younger children. So as a young man, when your mother disengages from you, you feel like you're isolated, and then they become alienated. And when they become alienated, then they start looking for attention and love in all the wrong places. And as you see where it is, it's in the streets. So my thing is that our children, they're looking for time. More than anything else, they need somebody to invest time in them. Where we at, at Taylor Park, everybody else's pool and everybody's splash pad is working, our pool is still drained. We still sit there without a pool and our splash pad working. I've been to one of the community centers that I've seen that is a model community center that I wish we had all the resources I had, and that's the Brother Corey Penns Community Center over there at the Boys and Girls Club. I'm a chef. I'm a certified credit consultant. I have a lot of skills. If we had all those skills in that Taylor Park, then we could make a difference. If we do not invest into those worst zone, the 36605 zone, if we don't invest now, it's going to get worse over the summer. So even though you in District 6, District 2, District 5, this might not be your district, it's going to take investment. And what I told my children when I would come...
Mr. Tumer, I'm sorry. I appreciate everything you're saying, but the time has run out. I know that all of the council members here would like to talk with you more about your ideas because we obviously are all very concerned. So please let us, if you've got some more information you would like to share with us, we'd be happy to take it and talk with you outside this council meeting, and you're welcome to come. And, and you're welcome to come back.
All right, I just wanna say that these are all the things that my children asked for that they need for the summer activities. And they wrote them down. I was supposed to come and let you all know those, but my time wouldn't allow that.
Well, please send them to us and we'll make sure that they get to the correct person.
Madam Vice President.
Hang on, um, who did I hear first? Corey?
I was gonna give him one minute.
Yep.
I appreciate it, uh...
Yes, okay.
One of the things that my chunk, my young people said that they needed, and I hate to say that, I said, what is the number one thing that you need in your community and for the summer activities? They said food. They said food. They said good, healthy food, not the bottom of the barrel food. The second thing they said were arts and crafts, electronic devices, and activities outside of that. And the last thing they said, we just want someone that cares. That's what they gave me in these papers. Number one thing to say, food, good food, healthy food. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and please share that with us if you would.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, if you wanna make copies or send them via email.
I will, I will send to you. And thank all you all for contributing to Alabama Hip Hop Week and for, uh, and for, uh, my fest. I appreciate everybody's contribution. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Ernestine Rogers.
Is Mrs. Rogers here?
Eddie Erby.
Morning, Eddie Erby, 1116 Richard Row, Mobile, Alabama, 36618. And I have, uh, Mr. Chief, uh, Jason Lewis here with me this morning. We'll be very brief. A week ago, uh, 6th June, 2022 was D-Day. Seventy-eight years ago, there were a lot of men stormed beaches of Normandy. One of those men was with us at that, at that night. We have been in contact with the French government for a month and a half. They came here, they brought an award here to decorate one of my men. It took place at the, uh, BMA Library there at 2 o'clock on D-Day of 2022. That gentleman's name was Mr. Robert Curtis Andre. If you get the call newspaper, they did, the call newspaper was the only one that did a full story on him. But in the meantime, we are here today because usually when you do something like this, sometimes money isn't everything, support is everything. We've had one person that's supported us from day one. And this person came in, they were, they were on their agenda to speak. And we kept looking around the closest it got to 2 o'clock and the person wasn't here. But then about 10 minutes till, she came in, a little flustered, but she came in. And that was our president of the city council, uh, our vice president, Gina Gregory. So we are here to give her a certificate of appreciation. Plus, we have some, what we call this poster here. This is what we call the Magnificent Seven. That is a poster of seven of the men who all highly decorated in World War II, starting with Henry C. Williams of Plateau. Jason Lewis is a member, born and raised in Plateau. He stays in Daphne now, but he's back. When we see, when you see us again, he will have a kid, a 17-year-old kid, dressed like I am now, that would be Henry C. Williams. But in the meantime, we wanna give, would you come forward so we can give you a... And we wanted to do, uh, Small too, but, uh, he's all over the place. He travels more than I do, so he's somewhere else now. Names I can give it to. Yeah, this, this, this plaque represent Henry C. Williams of Plateau, James Burke of Plateau, Purple Heart recipient, Lee Del Perio of Mobile, Purple Heart recipient, Booker G. Green of Mobile, Alabama, Moncadian Avenue, Purple Heart. Also PFC, Robert Sterling, Mount Vernon, uh, John Davis, Pritchett, Alabama, Purple Heart recipient, and Douglas Diamond of Pritchett, Harvard recipient. All those men are gone now, but this is the, one of the fire, firefights that they were in, that they all got purple hearts. All of them got their purple hearts except two of them. We're still working with Congressman Carr so we can get the rest of them. But that's what that picture represents. Uh, Small already has one, he got one with the 103 year old. This one here is a, from our program at the cemetery, what we call Operation Overload. This is a certificate of appreciation for, uh... And this one is one of the, one, we've started something all over again, you know? Uh, we went back there in 1866, but there were a woman in Buffalo Soldiers in 1860 named, uh, Kathy Williams. She reversed her name to William Kathy and so she got it in. She was okay until she got hit. So when she had to go to the doctor, they kicked out of the Buffalo Soldier because they found out she was a woman. Anyway, she's not, women are back now and they're doing a lot of other things. So this is a certificate, she has a lifetime membership in the Buffalo Soldier. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing this story. I can honestly see my name that way too.
Yes, right.
Oh, yeah, let's get some photos for Sandra's... Well, this is terrific, Mr. Erby. Thank you so much for bringing this to me. It really means a lot and I'm happy to continue to be a part of this. And I know some of my other colleagues are as well. And if Councilman Small was here, he would be just as excited as we see it.
Well, because, yeah, he has, we, we, can we leave his?
Yeah, sure. We'll definitely do that. Thank you so much and thank you for all that you do. To keep this alive and keep this program going. Cause I know it really was you and all of your efforts, uh, and just continuing the fight. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate these. They will go in my office.
Uh, Captain Erby? I'm just curious, how did you get through security with all those grenades and firearms and stuff? Uh, well, yes, sir, I appreciate all you do, just a little nervous today.
Uh, Reverend Jim Flowers.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Jim Flowers. I'm the rector of All Saints Episcopal Church at 151 South Anne Street, Mobile, 36604. Y'all may be wondering by now if I have anything better to do with my time. But I am here again to speak on the matter of redistricting because I believe that this is a gospel issue. It's a gospel issue because Jesus' teaching and ministry had everything to do with raising up those among us who are disenfranchised because of the system. That everyone would have dignity. Liberation theologians called it personhood. We have talked about this issue enough to know now that it is not so very complicated. It is an issue of simple justice. Justice, the pervading theme of the Gospel scribes, who borrowed from Plato the idea that justice is at the heart of a sustainable society. We know Plato's Opus as the Republic, but the original title was Ha Deci On Justice. For Plato, the Polis, the city Greek, the, the Greek city-state should be a reflection of God's just order, a means by which humankind might attain heaven on earth, no less. So this is not just a civil political matter, it's a spiritual one as well. We know, all of us, what has to be done. Voting districts should reflect the black majority of this city. And according to the Voting Rights Act, a meaningful majority. Four districts in which the black majority has a reasonable opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. That's the law. The mayor's map takes a good faith step towards that goal. But experts, namely the Southern Poverty and Law Center, have advised us that the mayor's map does not go far enough to accomplish that goal. These are constitutional scholars whose mission solely is to articulate what justice looks like in our midst. The revised map comes closer to that goal and it varies very little from the mayor's proposal. I don't think I'm being hyperbolic to say that this moment for the City of Mobile is an historic one. We have a history in Alabama and in this country, riddled with the sin of racism. I'm not talking about whether we have black friends or not. I'm talking about a system that has for centuries disadvantaged our black brothers and sisters. Racism is in our institutional DNA. This decision offers the possibility to repair and to heal. There's been talk that this issue is divisive, on the contrary. This issue has the potential to bring us together in a way this city has not known before. At the heart of this is trust, I think. I'm asking the supermajority of this council to trust this opportunity, trust the experts, trust the citizens of Mobile, have faith that this is the right thing, the right thing for all of us, the whole of us. Let's make headlines in the national news in a good way for a change. Let's choose the right side of history.
Shalila Dowdy.
Good morning to the city council, mayor's team, officers, city clerk, and those in attendance. My name is Shalila Dowdy. I reside at 1008 Barbara Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36617. I'm here today to speak about the ongoing redistricting process and a proposed annexation effort at the same time. Previously, there have been discussion about possibly combining the two efforts. I'm here to state that this is not the way to go. Mobile is the last major big city in the state left in the redistricting process. And I would suggest to continue to have an effective and transparent process. It would be in the best interest to not combine a process that is mandated by the federal government with a process that is of convenience. Elections allow voters to choose their leaders. Redistricting within Alabama allows elected leaders to choose their voters. Therefore, redistricting by itself is of the utmost importance. We would not combine an election with another process. Therefore, redistricting should be a standalone effort as well. This process is very impactful to the city and our community as a whole because if the lines are not drawn fairly, voters are not able to go to the polls and make a fair and adequate vote. We must complete the current redistricting process and complete the job of providing the black community of this city a fourth council district that allows them the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. Once we have completed that process, we will be able to fully turn our attention towards how best to grow the city's population to ensure its future health and sustainability. I'm not aware of anyone against growing our city. Myself and the community leaders that I work with want the same thing when it comes to our city. We do not just want to survive, we want to see our beloved Mobile thrive. Being that this discussion has come about because of wanting to see the growth in the city, we should discuss investing in and reviving our many long neglected historic neighborhoods that have, that have so many empty houses and empty lots. The city population has been closer to 200,000 at one point and it was within similar city lines that we have right now. Our city prides itself in our rich tradition and history and on being the oldest city in the state. But when we take a deeper look at things, it can be said that the city picks and chooses what historical neighborhoods they want to invest time, money, and resources in. We also should be discussed, be discussing ways to improve quality of life in the city to address the overwhelming crime issues and make it safer and more family friendly so that people will want to live within the city limits and not choose Mobile to be a city good enough to work in, but not live in. Additionally, when we work and live in a city, you are more invested in the success of that city. Lastly, I urge you to pass the Coalition Community Map. The 50.5 presented in District Seven from the mayor's map seems to be a handout to simply silence the black community and shut us up. District One, Two, and Three, black population all sit at over 60%. And for the new District Seven to only be 50.5 is not good enough. And we will continue to let our leaders know that we will not accept the bare minimum. Let's do the right thing and I thank you for the work that you have done thus far on the process.
Reverend Bobby Brown.
Good morning. Reverend Bobby Brown, I reside at 3651 Winlock Court and, um, councilperson in Reynolds District. I've stood before this council, I don't know how many times, to either pray or bring something before you. Not here to tell you anything new about redistricting. But I wanna tell you a couple of things though. Jesus in his last discourse said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." I'm a retired architect and one of the things when we are designing things, we come up and we said at form, all this function. If we are to have a one Mobile, we must function as a one Mobile. We must have representation in this redistricting that reflects a one Mobile. Presently, uh, we think it's lacking in the map that has been presented. So I'm asking you to do one thing. Let Mobile function as a one Mobile. Let the map function as a one Mobile. And I guarantee you, if we want growth, people see that there's a one Mobile. We want, we would like to come and be a part of a one Mobile. Not fragmentize a one that loves and reflects a community that is involved with the... Thank you.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, uh, madam city clerk, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Uh, greetings, Reggie Hill, 1007, uh, Center Street. Uh, before I begin, um, I would like to challenge those seated to the sides, uh, in front of me to join in reading "The Sun Does Rise" by Anthony Ray Hinton. And, uh, while the general public may not understand it, this is quite fitting, uh, seeing that author, Dr. Hinton, served, uh, 28 years in an Alabama prison after being wrongfully convicted. Uh, we know this is relevant in comparison at least, uh, to us. Uh, when a citizen is in court for, you know, four years over law that doesn't exist, um, even after the presiding judge advised, uh, the city to dismiss the case, all you have is paperwork. Um, when public officials, particularly in the executive branch, are intentionally advising entities not to conduct business with, uh, specific, uh, individuals, organizations from baseless allegations and, and accusations. Each of you are, uh, are aware of this as well. Uh, while still investing huge public dollars, um, in groups who have proven to be serious threats to our people. Or, uh, when an organization is approved, and we saw this discussion in the pre-meeting today, uh, is approved, uh, for specific funds unanimously approved. And yet the city still does not, uh, release that money, sometimes weeks, months, and years at a time. Last week, I mentioned that the, uh, youth violence prevention coordinator component to Operation Echo Stop was a joke. And it was to a lot of disdain from people sitting here. But that same day, uh, young people were shot and the very next day, a 17-year-old shot a 22-year-old. So once again, these are things not just being said to speak about. So we mentioned that there were 200 or so people that attended this event. We didn't mention that 95 to plus higher percent of those people are organizations and adults. So we're still missing out on getting to the people that we need to reach. Um, time will not permit me to, uh, discuss all the things that, that we need to, uh, discuss here. Uh, primarily the people are being disregarded. And I'll put it like this, there are two primary things. Let me just, let me just skip down, uh, to that. Two primary things that are going on as it relates to this quality of life piece here with us. There are different standards of living within the City of Mobile. A lot of people describe it by differences in, uh, I-65. Um, I don't agree with them because it doesn't matter about color or anything else. Uh, and the last thing is, I'm gonna have to finish this next week. The last portion is, uh, what we're doing in relation to public safety is just not working. These are what these two findings came to. These are what these two findings came to. Twenty seventeen, we completed this study. We revisited this year. Two hundred and eighty people from all of these districts, two hundred and twenty additional people. I'm sure that because we're at this state, I won't get an additional minute today, uh, but I will be back to, to complete these.
I'm sure we'll see you again next week. Thank you, Mr. Hill. All right, Ms. Lambert.
Ordinance is held over, sixty-four zero thirty-four. Rezone property located at the northwest corner of Cochran Causeway and Dunlap, Dunlap Drive from R one and I two to I two, sixty-four zero thirty-five. Rezone property located at twelve forty-eight Mont Lamar Drive and thirty-five hundred Michael Boulevard from R one and B three to B three.
So moved.
All, uh, just, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, passes.
Consent resolutions held over, forty-six four eight eight, honorarily renamed Russian Drive to Reverend David Campbell Senior Drive.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, we are excited to, to do this. Um, Reverend David Campbell Senior Drive, he has been, um, just, um, just done amazing things for the city of Mobile and represented the Tumberville community. So we're excited to pass this resolution today.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution's held over. Zero eight four nine four. Approved purchase order to Donahue Chevrolet for, uh, Chevrolet Tahoe Police Package SUVs. Zero eight four ninety-five, approved purchase order to Stivers Ford Lincoln for Ford Explorer SUVs. Zero eight four ninety-six, approved purchase order to Metal Craft Marine for a Rapid Response Fire Boat. Zero eight four ninety-seven, approved purchase order to Sound Associates for, for amplifiers, monitors, stage speakers for the Sanger Theater. Zero eight four ninety-eight, approved purchase order to Moscow Sports Lighting for field lighting for Matthews, uh, Park Baseball Field. And for, zero eight four nine nine, approved purchase order to Moscow, Moscow Sports Lighting for field lighting for Figures Park Baseball Field. Zero eight five hundred, approved purchase order to V A P T R for ten tennis court drying machines. Zero eight five oh one, approved purchase order to Bagman Russell Electric for street lighting parts and repairs. Zero eight five zero two, approved purchase order to Nixon Power Services for emergency generator for, uh, Mobile Police Department First Precinct. Twenty-one five oh three, authorized contract with Moffett and Nickel for consultant services for the Mobile Riverfront Redevelopment Project. Twenty-one five zero four, authorized contract with Think Guard for cybersecurity services. Thirty-one five zero five, authorized grant application to ADECA for Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. Thirty-seven five zero six, consider approval of certificate of public convenience and necessity to Care Keepers Health Care to operate a sedan service.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davis?
I would just like to, uh, point out with respect to item zero eight four ninety-eight, this is for, uh, improvement on the field lighting in Matthews Park. Matthews Park, while it's situated in District Five, serves really, uh, kids from throughout the city and really the county. And, uh, we've been trying over a number of years to make improvements to the park. We've made, uh, in the past, lighting improvements, uh, looking at, uh, repaving the parking lots and some significant improvements, uh, to the field. So, uh, these improvements to Matthews Park, while taking place over an extended period of time and costing a good deal of money, are going to, uh, make, uh, are gonna benefit kids, as I said, throughout the city and the county. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero three five ten through sixty-five seventeen.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I move to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of these items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero three five ten, appoint Ruffin Graham to the golf, golf course advisory committee. Thirty-seven five eleven, five twelve, and five thirteen, recommend ending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Barbecue and With My Honey for Blues on the River in Cooper Riverside Park. Uh, recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Lit Cigar Lounge for Port City Summer Bash in Cooper Riverside Park. And for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to Lit Cigar Lounge for City of Mobile Fourth of July Celebration Cooper Riverside Park. Fifty-eight five fourteen and five fifteen are declaring weeds noxious group sixteen twenty-nine and assessing cost for removal of weeds. Weed lean, repeat, weed lean group fifty-four. Sixty-five sixteen and five seventeen are approving award a special bonus to the Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month and, um, to the Public Works at Large Employee of the Month.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced, zero eight five eighteen through twenty-one five thirty-two.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I move to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of item twenty-five five twenty-seven. The remainder to hold over one week pursuant to council rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-five five twenty-seven, accept permanent sidewalk easement for the twenty-twenty-two CIP sidewalks project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Call for public hearings. Forty-one five thirty, call for public hearing to assent to the vacation of a portion of Virginia Street near the A P M T Container Terminal scheduled July nineteenth. Forty-one five thirty-one, call for public hearing to consider a fee for the vacation of a portion of Virginia Street near the A P M T Container Terminal scheduled July nineteenth.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
All right, start on my left, Mr. Reynolds.
No announcements.
Mr. Finn?
No announcements.
All righty. Mr. Davis?
No announcements.
Okey doke. Uh, Carol?
Uh, I've got a couple of questions to the administration.
All right.
Uh, being that there has been a robo-call on annexation, has the administration done anything to move forward with any type of annexation map? Or effort, or area, or any type of consideration?
Chief Barber?
Uh, the answer would be yes. Um, as by direction of the council back in April, we had begun the process of looking at the annexation areas and getting the information together. I think you'll see us calling for meetings with individual counselors to, at a time, so that we can discuss those outcomes.
What's the timeframe on calling individual council members?
It'll start this week.
What's the timeframe in order to get us to the end of those conversations?
Depends on how many questions each counselor has, how much information we have to continue to gather, um, what other stakeholders need to be spoken to. So it's a process.
Do we have the areas of intent for annexation?
We have areas that we have outlined, um, yes.
Okay, is it fair to ask you at this time, are they proportionate?
As, I'm sorry.
Is it fair to ask, are all areas, does it equal to a proportionate attempt?
Absolutely. Every attempt is made at the proper portions.
So we're looking at, I would say, maybe a couple of weeks before we see something on the agenda is what, what this sounds like?
No intent of, no intent of placing anything on agenda. Again, this is a process. I think that we do need to meet with y'all individually and see what the impact would be on the city as far as population, as far as questions you may have about what the demographics may look like. And so we want to begin the process of discussion in answering all the questions that y'all have as well as stakeholders in this community.
Do you have, I'm just projecting, that's, grab is the wrong word to use, but projected number that you're looking at as far as annexation? Number of people we'd like to come in?
Twenty-six thousand.
And those areas cover twenty-six thousand?
Yes, sir.
All right. I guess, uh, other questions later. Um, the other thing is, is that legally, what's the timeframe from presentation to vote?
There, from presentation or the meeting, there, there is no timeframe.
No, from presentation, I mean from point in time on the agenda to vote, to, to a request to actually voting. Yeah.
Okay, if, if, um, the council were to decide to go forward, and I'll, I'll let, um, either Chris or Ricardo correct, because it's been a while since I've looked at this. But I believe within ten days, we'll have it to the probate judge. I think he has no less than twenty, no more than forty days to call for the vote.
Jim, I'm trying to think something out of my mind right now. Um, when do you think, based on communication with council members, you guys will have that done?
I don't think that I'll be able to even project that until we have those conversations with the councils. And we get all the answers to the counselors and get all the information to you that you're requesting. So we, we really just want to open those conversations so we see what it, what information it is that you would like to see. Uh, we have no intention, um, and I think Ricardo would express this, is that we are so close to the August twelfth deadline that I do not anticipate any annexation, uh, votes by the council before that date.
You don't see an, a, a vote to allow or accept an annexation attempt is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, just two things. First of all, um, on the thirtieth of June at six thirty PM at the Connie Hudson Center, I'll be hosting a meeting for the residents of Asheville and Carriage Hills regarding the Milk House Creek Development. I'll be sending emails, and that'll be in my newsletter as well. Um, I think that's gonna be getting ready to move forward here. The developers will be at that meeting, um, with us on the thirtieth of June. Lastly, fourteenth of June, seventeen seventy-five, our United States Army was established, so it is their two hundred and forty-seventh birthday today. Happy birthday, Army. Thank you.
All right, is that it? All right. Just a few announcements from District Seven. Over the weekend, on Saturday, I sponsored the second annual Jason Caffey Basketball and Educational Camp. We had a great turnout. It's always good to see those kids come out and learn from some of these elite coaches basketball skills. We also had, uh, officers from the Bridging the Gap Program, and Joshua Jones, our Youth Violence Prevention Coordinator, was there to speak with the kids. And we also, which was something new this year, had, uh, representatives from Regions Bank who were there in order to provide the, the attendees some information on, um, you know, finances. Most of them were young and might not have checking accounts, but, uh, they talked about how to save money and just gave them some basic principles. So never too early to start with that. Uh, also, yesterday or last evening, I helped welcome the distinguished young women to Mobile. Uh, we were at Cooper Riverside Park, uh, nice turnout. This is the day when they are all introduced by, uh, their state sponsors and their host families come in order to, to pick them up and take them home, because they all stay with host families, not in hotels. And the city of Mobile, by the way, in case you did not know, is sponsoring the participant from Oklahoma. Her name is Jenna Scott, so I was able to meet her and hand her her proclamation. Tomorrow morning, bright and early, we will be at the newly refurbished and reopened Piggly Wiggly at Moffett Road and Howells Ferry. Everyone is welcome to come for the ribbon cutting. I'll be there. The folks who live out in that area have long been waiting for the grocery store to reopen because the one that was there previously had closed, and so this one is very convenient. And I look forward to being there with, uh, the managers and owners and all of the employees and some of the, uh, people who live in the area along with the chamber to cut that ribbon. All right? Anybody else? Anybody? Mayor, Met Administration? All right?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned.